The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
We will call the May 27th regular council meeting to order. And first off this evening, under presentations, it's a privilege to welcome Jennifer from Magna and your support team. Maybe you can introduce, and we'll go ahead with the presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor Ludwig. Yeah, Jennifer Massick, CEO of Magna Engineering. And I've got with me Jordan Quick, who's actually the project manager for your project. So she's the one who actually gets to work with you most days. You only get me once in a while, so.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and with that, I can jump right in. I did want to give a little update since I saw a couple of you this morning from the ribbon cutting. So Jordan and I spent the afternoon planting trees on the site. So it's really nice. We got to get our hands dirty, which is never a good thing when you're working in a wastewater treatment. But it was good. It was good. It was good for us. So really today, what it is, is we just wanted to give you a little update on where you're at. So I'm going to go through and talk about like the slides that you're going to see, talk a bit more about the why behind it. At the end, I'll go through it pretty quick, so if we have any questions, we can answer. Probably the one thing, I know I didn't talk a lot about it in the presentation, so just to kind of give you an up to this point. The RFP for this, sorry, the tender for this project went out last summer. We had a very interesting process of trying to find local bids because of the uniqueness and the size. It was in that weird spot where it wasn't quite too small, but it wasn't too big. So we ended up having a couple, a combination of contractors, both local and some people that we knew that are good at working in innovation, who worked really closely with Magna teams and the Estevan team to get it built last fall. The hope originally was to kind of get it fired up before winter started, but for anyone who's been buying products like pumps in the world, lead times, and everything else in between, we ended up getting them a little bit late in the season, and the decision was instead of trying to get it up and going mid-winter, we ended up kind of getting it started this spring. So just get an idea about kind of where we are today was definitely a process and a lot of hands. And part of that was, we were looking at doing it kind of the most cost-effective way. We wanted to do this demonstration project to ensure we kind of hit some targets I'll talk about in the presentation, but we needed this first stage. We wanted to keep it in that kind of scenario that we're looking for. We've applied for grant funding and just kind of waiting to what happens with that for this portion of the project, but I thought that'd be good, just to why we're here today giving you this update. With that, you can move to the next slide, Jeff. So for anyone who's, like, it's been a while since I've been in front of you talking about the actual project itself, and there was, we had a little conversation, a little bit about tour this morning, but the important part around these systems and for the purposes of the city of Estevan is that we've got the main key component, which is that separation of liquids and solids, and we're actually going to be using, we are using it today, and we'll be using long-term the existing facility to do that. So when these systems are built internationally, there are times when they don't separate it, they actually put the sludge right on the surface. Our difference here, the way that we're using them with the cold climate application, is that we are separating out those solids and we're putting the liquids into its subsurface. So it does require that separations of liquids and solids. So we'll be using the existing plant, just like we are during the demonstration project, even with the future project, but just certain components of it that we would need, which is the separations in the primary headworks. So the important part of what you're seeing out there is what we're doing with the liquid waste component. And this is secondary and hereditary treatment. There's a couple options that we're doing with the system out there, so it is being tested both as a polishing and as a full treatment system. So you'll see there's two trains out there, so we are running both systems. We wanted to run two trains regardless, because you just want to make sure if we have an issue with one, we can still use the other. So the decision was to take advantage of the two trains, and we're actually running two different systems right now. So that's that middle component of it. The third element is, it's almost like the discharge of the Surrice River is the reason that we're making the design decisions that we are around the treatment footprint. So depending on what we need for discharge depends on what the treatment size is for the facility. So what WSA1 does to do was build this demonstration project with those specific targets so that long-term we could see what we needed. Move ahead, Jeff. So these are some examples of our system that we have operating out in central Alberta. So in the central Alberta application, we've replaced a lagoon project there, so it was a full build, there was no previous plant, so we actually had to build a small headwork screening facility. So you're seeing that kind of pre-screening, so that's kind of coming out of the equalization facility. The pre-vertical flow is after it's gone through a fine screen, similar to your system where it's gone through that primary building and separated liquids and solids. Post-vertical flow biofilter, so that is the first system that you're seeing that's kind of perched when you're out there on-site looking at the demonstration project. So this is where you've got the aerated component, and so it's taking care of all the pathogens. A lot of the biological treatment happens in that stage, and then the horizontal subsurface flow is that last system. And here, you've taken out a lot of those dissolved nutrients and things like that. So that's why when you're getting to the end there, you're really looking at a very clean glass of water. What's really nice about it is when you leave the vertical, post-vertical flow filter, you can kind of see there's a little color to it, but it has no smell. Because at that point in time, we've gotten rid of all the biological aspects of it, but you've got a little bit of turbidity and a little bit of the nutrients left. So it's kind of like what stormwater would look like after treatment, but you've taken around all the things that leave that odor behind. So it is an interesting part of the process and a nice way to kind of represent it. Go ahead, Jeff. So the objectives for this project, very specifically, we're a treatment efficiency validation. So this is out of saying about, we know that we have to discharge it a certain way, so what are those treatment requirements that we're doing? Do we have the, kind of, basically, it's a population-to-footprint type of ratio that we're looking at? How big do we have to make the ultimate system to meet these treatment requirements? The second is the terms of the full-scale design and operation, so the different things that we're doing out there, building it next to the existing facility, how we're doing the testing, how we're doing the monitoring, every single one of these facilities, because they're scalable and modular and a little bit kind of custom-designed, we're going to be doing things that are very unique to the Estevan system. So some of the things that we're doing out there are to identify these pre-detailed design. And then lastly, verifying the Surrice River discharge regime. So the purpose of this is, we are doing this so that the WSA, their water security, is paying, yep, we're seeing your results, we know that what you're going to be discharging is going to meet those downstream requirements. So right now, where we're in is, the system is up and running, and we are testing it. So we're in that kind of monitoring phase, what we're calling year one. So right now, we're in the first kind of month where we are twice weekly doing the minimums in-house. So your Estevan team is doing all that in, where all the red dots are is where we're testing. So we've got those two streams, one of them, you can see where it says "raw," and the other one says "post-system." So this is where I was saying, we're testing two different systems. One of them is pulling right off the headworks building, and the second one, we're actually pulling from downstream of the treatment system. And this is why we want to see which way we're going to go between polishing and full treatment. And the reason for that is when we do the value engineering exercise for the full system, we're going to be looking at what is the most cost-effective way to move this system forward? Is it to use some of the infrastructure you already have and just do an advanced polishing system to meet these really high stringent discharge requirements? Or is there some cost benefit in actually decommissioning portions of the plant and actually going to the more full treatment using the subsurface wetlands? There's also a balance in there of operation and maintenance and what that looks like, maybe it's something that's scaled over time. So these different sets of results will allow us to do that value engineering exercise. So actually, so the first one is the in-house one. This one are the, there is some tests that we have to send out of house, and basically what this is, is you're shooting, there's just a couple. So over the whole year, we only need four events that are direct to the discharge and have a full panel of acute toxicity, and then seven sampling events spread over the year that talk, or just inlet and discharge. So what water security wants to see is, we're doing all this in-house testing, you're going to do a couple of these paid-for testing outside just to show it the, kind of, that they're comparable to what we're doing in-house. So the reason that we're here today, post-feasibility study and post-working through the different options that the city of Estevan could have been chosen, looking at what we're calling is the Magna Biofilter Wetland System, I'll take a moment to talk about why it has a name, because it's really a subsurface treatment wetland. It came up today when we were kind of chatting at the ribbon cutting. In wastewater, what we're, you're looking at generally is treatment technologies. We have these mechanical concrete plants that someone has invented, they've put on a shelf, and you can buy it. So you're either doing a lagoon, or you're doing a technology. So when Magna started this, who's a nature-based design engineering company, we come from the stormwater world, we build wetlands for treatment, we haven't had to patent or create them as technologies, they're just a biological treatment process, and we're using trees and nature to do it. But when we're working through, working with WSA, with water security, or any of the other regulator organizations across Canada, they're looking for some level of commitment to the type of technology. So last year, we actually came up with a name, and we actually applied for a patent. So it is actually a patent pending, and I always think that's quite funny, that we're patent pending how to design wetlands for wastewater treatment, because the earth's been doing it for thousands of years. So these are some of the things that we're always talking about when we, you see MBWS somewhere, and it really is just your subsurface treatment wetlands. But this sustainability element, we've been using this type of technology for hundreds of years, and really what we're doing is we're just bringing a higher level of engineering to it. So we're bringing a level of redundancy. When you go out there and you see the whirlybirds that are out there, we're just adding different redundancy. So those are pulling in passive treatment for when in colder climates or whatever else like that, where you might see it start to slow down. As the kind of water moves to the bottom of the system, it acts as like a bit of a vacuum, and those allow some of that passive aeration to come through. The community integration component of it, if we're out there planting trees today, even the trees themselves don't do a lot to the treatment component. What they do is they hold the media in place, and they also put roots down through the system. There's a little bit of carbon that gets added to the system, which is beneficial to some of the treatment in the biological oxygen and demand components of it. But what we really want is there isn't any scent from it. You look over, like, when anyone's looking down off of the hill over into the valley there, you're going to see what looks like giant flower beds or tree beds kind of a thing. Scalability, so you see, we've got a very small system up there with a very simple flow rate that can be scaled to any size. So full, like, we were talking, two options for Estevan even at this point, polishing or full set, we're full-size. That also allows us to build a couple trains at a time. You know, we've got a need now, but you've left the space for future growth of the system. The reliability component, and actually also the ease of reuse, these are kind of, go hand in hand. Because the important with the reliability is, what we were discussing today, is biological treatment is common to every wastewater system. The difference in a lagoon is it's extremely passive. Make it really big, leave it for a really long time, the bugs will eat the bugs. So on the other side, you've got these mechanical systems that are like active, so they've got a very specific superbug that does one specific thing, or they have a selection of those, and that's what kind of makes them more complex. So what the subsurface wetland environment does is, we use a biodiverse microorganism environment. And so we're still really just doing that biological treatment that you'd see throughout, but we're doing it in a more passive way, and that's where it moves towards more like a lagoon, and we'll see that a little bit in the next slide. But that passive treatment makes them more reliable, because when something happens, it happens slowly over time. It also means that if something happens in a moment, like, let's say Christmas Eve, you don't actually potentially have to deal with it for three or four days, right? You're like, you know what, I'm going to come back and check on the system. And that's some of the difference between active and passive treatment. We're doing the same biologicals, but we're doing it in such a way that it happens, happens a little slower, treatment happens a little slower, but so do catastrophes. And we got to the ease of reuse, really important to the Estevan system is, it has to have really high treatment quality. And that has to do with your discharge environment that's going to be receiving it, is a bit more of a, even considered an intermittent, an intermittent receiving environment, so you've got really high nutrient requirements, which is something that is uncommon in a lot of treatment options. So the idea of using the MBWS was, you've got this more natural passive option that actually increases your treatment quality, unlike a lagoon, or even aerated lagoons, or even a seagrass system. All of them just don't do a good job of doing nutrient removal. Great at other things, just not nutrient removal, and that's kind of where we fit in the middle, because we do actually do that nutrient removal at the same time as everything else. Go ahead, Jeff. So this is one I kind of alluded to, I always liked this slide. There are good reasons for doing all of these things, and the city of Estevan has done wetlands. Part of the wetlands that were up across the river where we used to discharge to before going over to Shan, these were the idea of them, is you're like, great, you've got this wetland environment, we're putting food into it, they're, you know, we're growing vegetation. One of the things with those surface wetlands is that they, in our climate, they do really good at taking up nutrient and treatment during growing seasons, and then when they die back, they put nutrients back in. So they're much better again at that biological side of it, but they're not great at the nutrient side of it when it comes to being able to discharge all through the year. But that would be a choice, we're doing it the same reason that Estevan did it. It was nice to do as a discharge component, kind of do some of that polishing treatment, so they kind of fit in that corner of being very environmental benefit. And then a little bit limiting on that, because that's kind of, they have some limits on what they can treat for. Whereas if you've got the mechanical treatment side, I mean, this is all the bells and whistles. Of course, all the bells and whistles comes with a certain amount of cost, not only upfront capital, but long-term operation, maintenance. And they're just mechanical parts, chemical additions, even higher operator skill levels, all those things fall into it. And then you have at the top, which is the lagoon, which is like, dig a puddle, let it sit, if you've got the room for it, let it sit for a really long time, and if you don't have to meet continuous discharge requirements or nutrients, you know, that's the solution. And our intention is to be in the middle of that. So we've still got that low ease of operation, we're bringing that environmental component of it with the wetlands, you're not dealing with the smell of it, it's something that's good to see, but then we're also, because we've increased a lot of those treatment requirements around nutrients, we are also getting the benefits of a lot of mechanical treatment facilities also. So really, this, I think, I love this, I love hate this picture, because it's a great picture of what a giant mulch-covered subsurface wetland looks like, because the trees haven't come in yet. So this one's in our location in central Alberta, and I don't know if any of you are coming out, Jeff, Sam, this year, but if you do, are out next weekend, you want to go for a drive, it's only two hours away. So if there's any interest in going out to this, we could do a site tour, but, because it has little trees on it right now, so we need to get some better pictures updated on it. But the big thing is, we're minimizing the amount of equipment that we're putting in, no significant by-product streams. And what that means is, when you're doing chemical component, actually even sometimes mechanical, you have things that are kind of going out or need to be replaced, and you've got a kind of a waste stream with that, so none of those. We were talking about the lower costs and footprint. This is the trade-off between, like, when we look at the triangle, much smaller than the lagoon, 10% of the footprint, but always a little more footprint than a mechanical plant. So one of the things we looked at when we were doing feasibility study, because of the location of your plant in the valley there, there is room to be able to do a choice like this. If it was sitting right next door to the building here, we might be having a different conversation. Again, ease of operation, that passive treatment, I kind of chatted about, so. So this big one for next steps, this is speaking directly to the demonstration project, so we can talk a little bit more after about the larger project, but it is still a little fuzzy, depending on what that's going to look like, from an Estevan requirement. We know what we need to do, but we don't know fully what the decisions are going to be for the city of Estevan, or what they're going to need to do for that. But for the demonstration project itself, Magna's out here supporting and monitoring, so we're out here tree planting today. We will be out here more often, you're going to see us once a month now that we're in the monitoring phase of it, and that's really to just support your team, be here for that additional troubleshooting. We will be doing the performance reporting, so everything's being submitted to us, we'll be writing the reports for the water security. And then lastly, these design recommendations for full build-out. This is where we'll be working with water security, and kind of, these are the report outcomes of it, these are the things that you're going to want to put into the design regulation. And what I mean by that is, we're doing this demonstration project to give the results, and then they're going to give them back and put them in a requirement, so in the design, it's like, you must meet these specific design requirements if you're going to build an MBWS. What the city of Estevan is doing for us is communicating, working really closely with us, we probably are in communication almost on a daily basis these days. They're actually doing the performance testing in-house, which is great, save the project a lot of outside cost. And they're doing the actual system operation, monitoring, maintenance, and this has been fantastic, because in the end, if the system, we're kind of working through, what is the system like to operate? And so what's nice is, when you've got the operators actually operating the demonstration project, when we go to doing the full build, you've got an organization that actually already knows how to operate it, which is fantastic. And I think, oh yeah, this is the, this is the great news from a political perspective, and I know Shane always talks about this. This is great for the city of Estevan, but when we're talking to water security, the reason they're excited about it is, this is filling a gap that is, basically, needs to be filled throughout the province of Saskatchewan, all of western Canada, and I would say it really across the country. As we're seeing more and more stringent water quality requirements for downstream, especially in more flood and drought years like we've had, we're starting to see that lagoons aren't really measuring up. So what do you do if you're a small community that has been operating a lagoon or something a little higher than that for a long time and can't really afford to move into a massive plant, or even just afford to operate a massive plant? So we have a lot of eyes on this project here, so as much as we're mostly, 90% of it is purely for the city of Estevan, we are watching, there's a lot of people watching it to see it as a solution for the rest of the province, too. And you can see a number of different people, so. I talked for a long time, Jeff.
No, that was great, Jennifer, and you made it very easy to understand. Thank you so much for that.
Okay.
You know, we're very excited, we're glad that we found your company, and we're able to go down this journey, because, my goodness, the costs, it's sustainable, not only the capital costs weigh less, but the ongoing day-to-day costs of a mechanical plant, which can be cost prohibitive.
Yes.
It's a total win-win. So thank you so much for that. We'll open the floor up for questions, comments from council. See, you did such a good job. Okay, Councilor Clark.
Thanks, Your Worship. When it's done treating, is it just naturally flow through there, or do you have to store it in a pond at the end of it? Or what happens as it's treated? Thank you.
Right now, it's going back into the system for the demonstration project, that was part of the requirement. It is designed to do continuous treatment. So when we talk about the opportunity for reuse, you do have storage ponds on the site there, if there was ever an option to keep some of the treated water, to use it for backup water for reuse, it could be done, but it is actually designed to do continuous, so you don't require storage.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Vroba.
Thank you, Your Worship. So you mentioned if we came to FCM, you'd be interested in a site tour. The site tour that you would show us would be just the bigger scale of what we're doing here?
Yes.
Okay, I think we should talk, because I think that'd be interesting, and I think Thursday, we may be able to have time for that.
That would be fantastic. We're even on-site on Thursday, so it actually works out great for us.
Perfect.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, observations? You did such a good job, they're fully satisfied with the information. So thank you so much, Jennifer, and we look forward to continuing to work with you on this project. Very excited. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah. You're more than welcome to stay. Most people, for some reason, do not stay, they have better things to do, but we totally understand.
It's quite the tree planting day.
Yes, you're probably, you're probably tired. You want to go see the hockey game, too, right? I get it, I get it. Okay, well, thank you, ladies, thank you so much. Okay, moving on, could we have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Thank you, Councilor Clark, seconded by, Councilor Ford, ready for the question, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, could we have a motion, please, to accept the minutes of the council meeting held on May 13? Thank you, Councilor Vroba, seconded by, Councilor Walizel, ready for the question, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from the Estevan Exhibition City X Beer Garden Event Permit, June 16. What's a wish of council on this? This is for the Estevan Exhibition Association for the Energy City X Cabaret. Councilor Vroba.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I think acceptance and approval, but also just a side note that they are looking for volunteers to help out at the cabaret, I believe, on the Saturday night, so, again, it's on their Facebook, and they're actively looking, so if anyone can help out at that, or probably anything to do with the fair this year, they'd probably take it.
Okay, thank you, and that's June 15, 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Councilor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. I can confirm they are looking for volunteers everywhere, so if they do, if anybody is looking to volunteer, reach out to me or reach out to their Facebook page, and I believe there's a phone number on the page as well.
Okay, thank you, and you'll second that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, comments, observations? Seeing none, ready for the question, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from the Estevan Exhibition Community Event Permit for June 15. What's a wish of council on this one? Councilor Cernik?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, and Councilor Ford will second, thank you. And this is for the beer gardens on the ground, starting Friday, June 14 to Sunday, June 16, all-inclusive. The permit times will be Friday, June 14, 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM, Saturday, June 15, 1:30 PM to 8:30 PM, Sunday, June 16, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Any further questions, comments from members of council? Seeing none, ready for the question, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from the Black Grass Opera Parking Lot Party Events Permit, September 14. What's a wish of council on this? Councilor Clark?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by, Councilor Ford?
Yes, Your Worship, can we just reach out to the police as well and just make sure they have enough staffing for that weekend? Because I know they like to have extra staffing for community events like this.
Okay, sure. City Clerk, if you don't mind making that notation, we have the police board coming up, we'll mention that. Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, ready for the question, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have the GFL Cart Report for the month of April. Could we have a motion, please, for that? Councilor Cernik, thank you. Seconded by, Councilor Clark, thank you. Ready for the question, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, under written reports of committees, we have from the Southeast Transportation Committee, the meeting minutes of April 23, the AGM minutes of April 23. City Clerk, can we take both them together?
Sure.
Okay. Councilor Clark, you'll make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Have we got a second or? Thank you. Councilor Cernik, Councilor Clark, anything you want to add?
Thanks, Your Worship. Yes, we had our AGM up at Kenosha, we had great attendance from all of the RMs and villages, towns throughout the area. We had a presentation from the people that do MG30, they work a lot with the RMs, but they did a presentation on what works, and there's some great information that we received from them, and we went through the regular things that an AGM would do, so, very successful AGM and meeting, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, ready for the question, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have from Leisure Manager Neighborhood Block Party Kits Report, and we have with us this evening, Erin. So thank you, Erin, for coming this evening. Would you like to speak to that a little bit?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a pretty simple concept. We really want to try to do, to try and make it easy for neighborhoods to come together and socialize, meet one another. It was a big initiative in the strategic plan, and so we've done what we can to hopefully make that simple and easy for these neighborhoods to do just that, get to know one another a little bit better, and come out and help and support, say hi, wave to your neighbor, and just get to know who it is that you live beside.
Thank you, Erin. It's a great idea. Thank you for your work on this. I know sometimes, even in communities as small as ours, some people, if you could believe it, don't even know their neighbors. So this is a great opportunity, and hopefully it'll take off. Thank you. Councilor Vroba?
Thank you, Your Worship. And thank you, Erin, and your team, for doing this. Our Community Safety and Well-Being Committee has also talked about this. We talked about it at the coffee talk. And we just think it's a great idea, because I think it's another way of stepping stone of promoting safe communities also, because it's been proven that a safer community is committed by knowing your neighbors, by knowing, you know, what happens in each other's homes, that kind of thing, and just even knowing each other's phone numbers or names, so you can tell each other when you do see something. So, I think this is great, to be able to get a good start, to get people to know each other. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Councilor Vroba. And, you know, it brings to mind, we used to have block parties all the time, and we used to be a block parent. Whatever happened to that block parent? Is that even still in existence? It was a great idea, because you'd see a little gaffer going down the street crying, and you'd go out, "Are you okay?" And, you know, "He's lost," or whatever. Whatever happened to that?
We actually talked about that also at the committee level, and we're going to start looking into those kind of programs. I was doing some research. Edmonton has gone leaps and bounds as one community, one huge city, too, that has done different initiatives like that. And so, we're going to start looking into that, and hopefully, in the fall, we'll start being able to present some different ideas. But that was one of the things that we recognized, is that a lot of kids, when they're out there walking to and from school, by getting to know your neighbors, by knowing people who are home during the day, things like that, children can feel safe to be able to reach out to a neighbor in the event they just even fell off their bike, you know? We've gone so far in this world now, where someone falls off their bike, and the neighbor's helping them. Sometimes the child just even feels like they're in danger from the person that's helping. So, I think it's, I think we're on the right track with small steps, with especially what you just explained about this creative idea to get people together. And so, maybe we will be able to bring back things like the block parent.
Yeah, I think that's great, Councilor Vroba, to be a more collaborative neighborhood. And, for example, if you see one kid hitting another kid with a lunch kit, you would feel more comfortable in going out and, you know, breaking up the fight and say, "That's not nice," that type of thing. Whereas, I know some parents are afraid to even go outside. They don't want to get involved, because, I mean, some parents, it's like hockey bobs with pit bulls with lipstick. Anyway, I may be said too much already. Go ahead, Councilor Ford.
Your Worship, you're going to get yourself in trouble. I just have two questions. Will there be a deposit to take out this kit? So then, upon successful returning of this kit, will they receive money back? Or is it just free and just return it on a goodwill kind of thing?
Yeah, thanks for the question. It's been one of those items where we've been really torn on whether it is the direction that we want to go. So currently, the recommendation that I would make is that we would not have any fees. We're trying to make this incredibly simple. We know there'll be costs that will likely be incurred in some fashion. So if we can do everything in our power, and really sort of support it in a trusting kind of way, and fingers crossed that everyone will show that same sort of trust and value to what we're trying to put together, then we'll be successful in this program.
Awesome, thank you. And my second question is, when these kits are actually returned, are we able just to send out a survey to whoever took these kits out, just so we can, you know, ask them how many people came to their party? Not any personal questions, just so we can kind of get some sort of measurable? Because I know we did a lot of research looking into these in other communities, and it was kind of tough to find a lot of information. So if we can kind of have that base of information, we'll be able to pass it along to others.
Yeah, thank you again. It's an excellent idea, and something that I hope that when people are reserving these kits, I'll have that information to help support them. I'm hoping to help take a little bit of that intimidation off of it. And if I have some ideas, or I have the ability to help make this as easy as possible, I will. And so then, that way, I'll also be able to connect with them and do a follow-up, and also help us learn on what the community actually needs. So we're realistic to what makes this a good opportunity to take this on, because it can be a bit of a big job hosting this kind of a party.
Absolutely. Sometimes, some parties can go on. Okay, well, thank you for that. Did we have any more questions or comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. We did get the motion, did we? Am I ahead of myself?
Yes, I think when I spoke, I probably should have said that I would like to make the motion. I would continue with this.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. Executive reports, next, from our safety coordinator. Thanks again, Erin. You don't have to stay, you know that. Okay, have fun. Helen is here, our safety coordinator. Thank you, Helen. With the AED station, we, the other night, we didn't want to make a decision. We wanted a bit more information. So thank you for coming tonight, and maybe helping us out with that decision. Would you like to impart some knowledge on this AED standalone station?
Sure, Your Worship, thank you. So I did reach out to Saskatchewan. I did reach out to Saskatchewan communities that do, in fact, have it. It was all very positive, every one of them. They focused on having the AED centralized in their community, not indoors, but it's outdoors. One, in the first month, actually utilized that AED. It has an infrared camera in there, so you know if there's a, someone taking it out to try and steal it or vandalize it. So a picture will automatically be sent to whoever's going to be monitoring this. It has a fan in there, it's temperature-controlled as well. They just asked that the decision, the location where we put it in, it's not in direct sunlight, because that'll impact the sensor and the temperature with that as well. So again, there is, it is camouflaged. There's two ways of going to do with that, is a standalone, or we mount it on the wall of a building. The most important part of that is our contribution, of course, is that if we went to a standalone, we'd require a concrete pad for it. And the other one is regardless if we go wall-mounted or standalone, is that we would need a source of power for that. And they recommended that you, we have a very good internet cellular service there, because the people, when they go to grab it, are dialing 911. So that would be, you know, some sort of, you know, these are facts that we need to decide, where's the best location that can be utilized in our community.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Helen, thank you. So probably where we might be looking is the high-traffic areas, maybe the park, maybe Churchill Park. Where else would you suggest?
That's a good, it's heavily populated, the pathway there. There's now the new building, so there is power there, a power source. The other one is, again, on Fourth Street, our little park in between.
Yes.
Is another option as well.
Exactly.
Again, inside, we already have AEDs that are located inside of all of our facilities, so this is certainly an outside. So the next step is applying for the grant.
Okay.
And if we get the grant, then we can move forward. Now, at the end of four years, that's where it comes maintenance costs for the city. So it would be the batteries and the pads, and of course, if we're hooking it up to power, the power source. But that's at the end of four years. Once we get it installed for the grant, we're good for four years. They monitor, they maintain it. What has to happen is for monitoring it is, who's ever in charge? And everybody's looking at me, so that would probably be, that I would be getting that right away alarmed to me that, A, there's a temperature change, I need to go see it, or right away, if someone's approaching, opens it up, it's alarmed, but it's infrared, so we can see who is taking that. Two of the three communities, no one's ever, ever tempted to do that. One, they said, when it first got in, people were curious, but that's, they would open it, close it when they heard the alarm. No one actually walked away with it. And the most successful one is, what, 30 days, 30 days installed? And somebody was on the street, and down they went, and someone ran to use it. So, AEDs are life-saving measures. We've had it in our facilities, and this is before COVID, where there was an event going on at the Wiley Mitchell Building. Somebody went down, needed an AED. Somebody remembered we had them in the leisure center, ran and got it.
Awesome.
So, we hope we never use them, but they're there for a safety measure.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much for that report, Helen. Go ahead, Councilor Wallezer, and then Councilor Vroba.
Thank you, Your Worship. Helen, with our upgrades being made to the swimming pools, a place like Churchill, would it now be required to house an AED indoors as well, to meet the requirements of the swimming pool? Or would this be separate at all of our parks?
That's separate, that's separate, Your Worship, because that's a seasonal, and it gets locked at night. So, the idea of this grant is that the machine is accessible 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days. So it's not somewhere, it's locked in the evening or weekends, that it's... Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Vroba.
Thank you, Worship. I was just thinking, as we were talking, some of those hills that we have in our pathway system, it'd be perfect for at the top. I've almost done, I almost needed one of those machines, but it would...
Or you could roll down and get it on the bottom.
No, because then you got to get back up. So I was just wondering, in order to fill out the grant, do you actually have to have the location on the grant? Or can you fill the grant out once accepted, then apply, or then decide on the actual location?
Your Worship, they recommend that we have a location. But if we're, you know, teetering between one or two locations, I can put that on the grant form, and then if we are approved, then we can come back to the table and discuss the final location at that time.
Yeah, because I like the idea of one of our local parks, that, you know, especially when there are a lot of people that are enjoying the park. But then I also like the idea, if a downtown, if we don't have a lot of different businesses that have one inside, that if there was one, you know, we're doing this beautiful downtown beautification, and if we don't have an AED machine down there in one of the businesses, it may be a good location to have one outside. So then, that outside park would make a good location.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Vroba, Councilor Ford?
Thanks, Worship. Just to clarify, it'll be us applying for this grant, correct? Not the person who originally brought this forward to us? Like, it'll be the city of Estevan applying, correct?
So, Your Worship, what happens is, the person who contacted you will fill out the grant on behalf of the city of Estevan with our information.
Okay, so the question that I posed in the April 8 meeting is, do they charge us a fee then? Or do we have to pay them a percentage of the money that we get for that grant? Like, what, do they, do we owe them anything for them doing this?
That, I'm not sure. Helen, if they get a little piece of the pie for putting this forward, I don't know.
The grant is up to, Your Worship, is up to $10,000. So, as you can imagine, the standalone is much more costly than if we went to wall-mounted for several reasons. So the grant is up to, is up to $10,000. So it all depends on the machine we put, where we put it for the cost that the grant... So we're going to go for the full to cover everything, is my understanding, that we don't owe them anything.
Okay, just clarifying.
I will certainly, Councilor Ford, I will double-check that.
Okay, I just know grant writers usually expect or request a percentage of whatever you get, so I'm just making sure that we've got all our Ts crossed.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Very good question, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ford. Any further questions, comments?
I will make the recommendation, Your Worship, that we proceed with this AED grant.
Thank you, Councilor Vroba. Have we got a second or? Councilor Frank? Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Thank you so much, Helen.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Okay, next, under executive reports, we have the Fire Department Bylaw Enforcement Report for April. Could we have a motion, please, for acceptance of the April Report, Bylaw Enforcement Report for the month? Thank you. Councilor Cernik, seconded by Councilor Frank. Any questions, comments? Councilor Wallezer?
Thank you, Your Worship. One question I keep receiving is, what is the easiest way to contact the bylaw officer? Should we still be directing people to call the 1-800 and have them transferred over? Or should they call the fire department and be transferred?
That's a good question. City manager, probably the fire department?
There is an actual bylaw number that we've transferred over there, so 634-1520 is the number for bylaw.
Okay.
If you do phone the fire hall at 1-850...
That'll work, too.
But we'd like to push everybody 634-1520.
1520, okay. Yeah, thank you for that, if we can mark that out. Okay, any other further questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, under introduction of bylaws, we have bylaw 2024-2083, building bylaw, amending bylaw 2023-2076, and tonight, we will give first reading. Now, this is a fairly lengthy bylaw. I know council will have gone over it. All of the, everything that should be noticed has been highlighted. So, do we have a motion, please, to accept or to give bylaw 2024-2083, building bylaw amended, amended bylaw, first reading tonight? Thank you. Councilor Wallezer? Is that a motion?
A question.
Okay, if we can get a motion, then we'll ask the question. Councilor Cernik, seconded by Councilor Frank. Go ahead, Councilor Wallezer.
Your Worship, during my review, there were multiple comments in the side notes that seemed to indicate that this was not the final bylaw. And my concern in passing it tonight is that there were still notes indicating, not sure how this is redundant, confused on your comment, confused again. I don't feel comfortable making this motion tonight, knowing that there could still be work to be done on the bylaw.
Okay, and I guess we could maybe talk to the city clerk a bit about this. This isn't the first time. The first time we passed it, the province sent it back. Now supposedly, city clerk, Richard, has been in contact and had conversations with the province in what they needed to be changed. Supposedly, those changes have been incorporated, but if you like, we can send it back to Richard. In fact, we can have him come to the next meeting. What's your thoughts, city clerk?
Your Worship, so the process was, in November, you passed a bylaw. It went to the province. They did not accept it. They said the, some of the language terms were incorrect. So this time, the building official, Matt Step, he actually sent it to MUNACODE, and had all of these changes approved by MUNACODE. And so, we don't know if the province will accept it until we pass it on the floor and send it to the province. If anything is incorrect in it, the province will not pass it, and it will come back to the floor after the fact. It does not become law until the province has approved it. So if that makes any sense, or does that help a little bit?
Okay, well, thank you for that, city clerk. Councilor Vroba?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. No, I agree with Councilor Wallezer, because like on number 41, just for an example, it says, "Work must not commence before a building permit is issued." And then there's two comments, one in pink that says, commented GH13, similar to Section 14. Then in blue, it says, commented M514R13, Section 14 is not similar, confused again, question mark. So I think what Councilor Wallezer is saying is exactly what I was saying when I read this, is it really was like, well, what word is going to go in there? So we're passing a bylaw that we really don't know what is going to go in there. So what you're saying is, we don't need to know what word is going to go in there. We're just going to send it off to the province and see if they're satisfied with that. Then it will come back to us, and we will have second reading at that time.
Well, I think they expect us, after the public see it, city clerk, to give second and third reading, then it goes to them, then they go over, then they send it back, correct?
The province will not preempt or any draft motion. They will only look at what is completely passed by council. What you see right now are all the changes that were made. What you will see at the next meeting will not be these changes. Everything will be accepted, and it will be as one document, and that will be the final details.
So then maybe what you're saying is, we pass it tonight, and the next time we read it, we will have all of the finalized words in it.
Yeah, I would suggest first reading tonight, and then when it comes back for second, hopefully it's cleaned up. If that makes any sense. Any questions, comments?
Just, and maybe we...
Councilor Frank?
Sorry, just to clarify this, but are you kind of saying the comments have already been addressed in this? They're just, we're just still seeing the comments have been sent back and forth. So this is already, these comments that have questions have already been answered in the wording. So we're not talking about changing the wording again. We're saying that they have had a communication. We're just seeing the communication. We're essentially seeing the email chain that's not relevant to us.
Yeah, that's a fair comment. We probably should have had that cleaned up for the first, but my understanding, it will be for the second. it will be for the second. So yeah, now we've got first and the motion for first and second, if, if council's okay with that, we'll give it first tonight. We'll talk to Richard with the intention of having that cleaned up for the second reading, if that's okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that, because actually the pink is pretty much, I think, what they commented, the blue is what he's done.
Yes, yes. Okay. Are we okay with that? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Uh, next, under public hearings and reports, this evening we have none. Giving notice, we have none. Motions from committee, we have none. Under consideration of bylaws, we have four bylaws that we gave first reading to, and tonight we will be looking at second and third reading. First of all, bylaw 2024-2079, bylaw to fix the rate of taxation, we will be asking for a motion for second reading from council. Thank you, Councilor Wolliser, seconded by Councilor Clark. Questions or comments? This being second reading, this is where you can ask questions. Seeing none, uh, ready for the question? All in favor? Uh, Carrie, okay, next, could we have a motion for third reading and adoption for use of bylaw 2024-2079? Third reading and adoption for use. Councilor Frank, thank you, seconded by Councilor Cernick. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under consideration of bylaw, we've got bylaw 2024-2080, bylaw to provide for the health levy, second and third rating this evening. Could we have a motion, first of all, for second reading, please? Thank you, Councilor Ford, seconded by Councilor Frank. Questions or comments? Uh, Councilor Roba? Nope, oh, I thought you had your hand up, sorry. Okay, uh, no questions, comments? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Now, could I have third reading, please, and adoption for use of bylaw 2024-2080, a bylaws in the city of Estevan, province of Saskatchewan, for special tax on regional health care in the city of Estevan? And this, of course, will be going toward the MRI machine. Uh, Councilor Clark? Thank you, seconded by Councilor Roba. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under consideration of bylaws, we have bylaw 2024-2081, bylaw to provide for library levy, second and third reading. I'd like to ask now for second reading of bylaw 2024-2081, bylaw in the city of Estevan and the province of Saskatchewan, to provide for special tax for library levy and operations in the city of Estevan. Thank you, Councilor Wolliser, second, have we got a second or for that? Thank you, uh, Councilor Cernick, ready for the, or any further questions at this point in time? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Now I will ask for the third, uh, an adoption for use of bylaw 2024-2081, bylaw in the city of Estevan, province of Saskatchewan, to provide for special tax for library levy and operations by the city of Estevan. Third reading? Thank you, Councilor Cernick, seconded by Councilor Roba. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Last but not least, under consideration of bylaws, we have, oh, sorry.
I'm going to declare conflict of interest, design of property in the business improvement district.
Oh, okay, thank you. Let it be noted, city clerk, Councilor Frank has left the council chambers. Okay, we'll be asking for second reading this evening of bylaw 2024-2082, bylaw in the city of Estevan and the province of Saskatchewan, to provide for business improvement district bid levy in the city of Estevan. Do we have a motion? Thank you, Councilor Clark, seconded by Councilor Ford. Any questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Thank you. Now could I have third reading and adoption for use, please, of bylaw 2024-2082, bylaw in the city of Estevan and the province of Saskatchewan, to provide for business improvement district levy in the city of Estevan? Thank you, Councilor Wolliser, seconded by, thank you, Councilor Cernick, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, inquiries. Councilor Roba?
Thank you, worship. I had one, actually, it was, I think, of, end of last year, and it came, it was regarding the fence on Sillers Street, um, and basically it's by the train tracks there. There's a white fence that went up by the developer and so I just had a homeowner back there comment that a couple of the boards have blown out, I believe, during the, through the wind. And what their concern is, is that if we allow just a couple of boards to be gone, eventually it'll just be kicked out or it'll fall out. So they're just asking if the city could go and look at it and take, there's, I, I went down there and took a drive and there's only maybe three or four spots where it should be replaced, so I don't think it'd be too expensive. I just don't know how much work it takes to put them in there.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilor Roba. Uh, that's a very good point, because it's like the car with one broken window. If you leave it, then all the windows and the trunk, the doors, the tires, and then the engine's gone.
Yeah.
So, uh, thank you for bringing that up.
If there's something we can do.
We will bring it to the attention of the right people.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, also let it be noted, uh, city clerk, that Councilor Frank has re-entered council chambers. Thank you. Uh, Councilor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. I, I got an opportunity to attend part of the Southeast Summit, which was held at the, uh, at the college. Uh, it's an incubator for innovation and inspiration, and it certainly was. It was a forum to celebrate Southeast District's art heritage and multiculturalism. So it was people from the, all the communities, uh, pretty well up to Number One Highway in the southeast corner, and a lot of positive people in what they're doing in their community. So a lot of information were changed, exchanged among those people, and I want to congratulate them on that was their first attempt at this and it was very successful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that and thank you for attending. Councilor Wolliser?
Thank you, your worship. This past week, I was asked to be the reviewing officer for the number 30 Wiley Mitchell Royal Canadian Air Cadet Squadron for their ceremonial review and awards parade. Another exciting night, uh, focusing on celebrating the youth in our community. They've worked on orienteering responsibility, they've learned gliding as well as, um, public speaking skills, and we were able to listen to those prize-winning speeches as well as watch a full parade of their, um, talents and abilities. So their next intake will be this fall, and it is a free program for anybody over the age of 12.
Okay, well, thank you so much, uh, Councilor Wolliser, for attending. And it's a great organization that gives young people leadership skills, and if they want to stay in it, they can actually get their pilot's license for next to nothing. So it's a great organization. Thank you. Councilor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. Uh, just an early congratulations to the Chamber of Commerce for 120 years. They'll be celebrating on Thursday evening or Thursday during the day with their success summit and, and then in the evening, they're going to have a supper. And then just a reminder to the community that the St. Joseph Hospital Radiothon is on June 5th, and they're going to be barbecuing and selling hot dogs and hamburgers for lunch and for supper, so if there's an opportunity to come down. And I believe they're going to have bouncy castles, there was, um, mascots last year, there's a whole pile of activities for everybody. So if you get half an hour going down there, it's going to be a good day.
Absolutely. It's a great cause and, uh, thank you for bringing that up. And as far as the other, that'll be great as well. Thank you. Councilor Cernick?
Thank you, worship. I had lots of inquiries into the old pothole problem that we see every spring. Uh, of course, everybody wants a new pavement everywhere. That would be nice to see, but what is nice to see is I've seen more patching being done in certain areas rather than just filling the old hole with the old shovel and, and asphalt there. So hopefully the patching prob, and patching the problem areas can continue rather than just filling the holes, so. Not really a question, but it's just good to see, just a different, different way to do it.
Yeah, absolutely, and we've got good people and, you know, unfortunately, uh, some of these negative people like to give disparaging comments. Uh, if you can believe it, sometimes even at ourselves as elected officials, but also at our people that do such a fantastic job. I don't mind having that aimed at us, but our people do a very good job and we take exception, uh, when they question their abilities. So, uh, thank you for bringing that up. It was a very bad year, uh, this year for potholes. It's going to cost us probably double or triple what it normally would because of that, but we will get on top of it. And if people are patient, I think they'll be very happy with the job that our people will do. Councilor Frank?
Thanks, your worship. And just to add to that, it is largely due to the, the abnormal winter that we had that causes the puddles, not, not any other reason, despite what might be said on social media, so. Uh, that's, I had nothing else, but yes, uh, thank you, worship. I'll just echo those comments. I'm very, very appreciative of the hard work of your teams doing. The roads are cleaning up and unfortunately, a weird winter can lead to frost, frost boils